Meeting order? Join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do a roll call.
Mayor Keim.
Here.
Alderwoman Kleghorn, here.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Donovan.
Here.
Alderman Bennett.
Here.
Alderman Einman. Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderman Steiger.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Great. We'll move to approval of the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No presentations or awards tonight? While we're on it, though, we'd like to recognize Alderwoman Kleghorn for her Educator of the Year Award at Friday's Chamber Banquet, so very well deserved, so congratulations.
Thank you.
No personal appearances?
No.
Okay, we'll move on to City Administrator's report.
You can give an updated report at your seats. The next item that I added was the, we had an ACH issue earlier this week, occurred on Tuesday, random deposits and withdrawals, various people were affected, they called and asked questions about it. It was resolved overnight, so we didn't publicize it, put it out there to see what the extent was going to be the next day. It was very random. Found out it was a third-party issue, wasn't anything to do with the city or the city's systems or the city's software. It was just out in the web, because it was just, the people that were being affected were not our current customers, not current employees, not all current employees. So it was really a weird, weird issue, a situation. But it got resolved, everything is fine. I know there was some stuff on Facebook about it, and we had some calls from people. They were very nice about understanding how it occurred or what happened. But it was through, through the ACH clearinghouse and not through us. We did not initiate it, we didn't set it up, there wasn't anything that we had done before, so it was.
How did we become aware of that?
We got a call from a city employee who said, "I really appreciate, you know, getting a paycheck from the city, but you didn't have to send me five." And then he sent us a screenshot of it, and it's like, oh, that's kind of odd. So then we worked with our bank and kind of worked our way through it and found out it was either region-wide or nationwide that there was this issue that occurred, with a third-party vendor that they work with, that the ACH clearinghouse works with.
Did Forward Slash become aware of that somehow, or?
No, we didn't contact them, we contacted our software vendor, because we would have thought it had come out of our system. When we contacted them, they had already heard that this was an issue outside of their, outside of anything that we did. Because we're isolated, we don't have, we don't have that kind of access into our, into our software. So we didn't understand what was going on, we wanted them to know. We thought it was more important for them, because it wasn't that we had a breach. That wasn't the issue at all, it was a breach elsewhere. Got you. Thank you.
Any other questions regarding the report? The City Administrator report? Move to staff reports. We'll start with Dave.
Good evening, everyone. You've got my report there, just want to cover some highlights on the Heritage Commission. We've had a couple meetings since I reported last, and you've got the results there. Our next meeting is May 15th. On the outreach grant that we were approved for last year, we are now out to bid on that. So bids are due back May 2nd, so that'll be next week. I'm going to skip down to the comprehensive plan update. Just FYI, we put a, the results on Facebook earlier this week of the questions, so that is available. We had covered that with the Steering Committee and with staff already last month. The next public outreach will probably be in the June-July time period, so just FYI on the comp plan.
Dave, where can you, is that through the city website you can get to that, those survey results?
Facebook and the city website now, yeah. When you go to Facebook and click the link, it takes you to the city website. Back up to Building Department Code Enforcement. We discussed last year, and you have a staff report in your packet, of purchasing a new permitting land use and code enforcement software. We put together some bid specs, went out, got four responses, included the bid responses with your packet there. We are tonight recommending Cloud Permit for that service. You'll see the reasons why in the staff report. One of them actually boiled down to, one of the decisions actually boiled down to automated emails, which was one of the facets that we wanted. So you apply for, you know, a permit via online, through the cloud. You know, you receive an automated email that your application is complete and submitted. And when we receive it and look over it, you receive another email that says, you know, you've been received your 10-day timetable or 5-day timetable, whatever it is, starts today. It's all automated, which will save Gene and I quite a bit of time. You can see the costs associated with it there. We had budgeted $10,000, and this would be a $10,000 annual price. But the first year was a lot of data migration, training, implementation, it's $18,000. We had also budgeted $15,000 for some code review. So what we're proposing is to take those two, pay for this, and then do the code review next year.
Dave, with Cloud Permit, how much storage, like, is there a block? Have you said we feel that, and I could see a permit from X years in the past?
I don't know the answer to that, but I do know they keep that data. I mean, it would be ours if we chose to leave Cloud Permit at some point later. They would give us, that is our data, and it is unlimited. We don't have to pay to get like another gigabyte or a terabyte of data, it's unlimited. I don't know how long it stays available to the customer user. Certainly for two years, because some of our permits, you know, you have a year to complete.
Inquisitive look. Yes, sir.
I did have another question brought up to me today about that project off of Market Street. And it's basically, and I don't know what there's, the houses along Market Street, I guess, are zoned.
Most likely R1.
Okay, so in an R1 area and stuff, does that not require any special use permit to cut a commercial entrance through a residential, an R1 area?
They're adding a driveway, it doesn't require any sort of permit for that, no. We, they did seek a grading, excavating, and filling permit, and that was issued.
So?
We don't, we don't have driveway permits on a regular basis. So if you're residential or commercial and you want to add a driveway, we don't have a permit for a driveway.
Is that unusual?
I mean, there are cities that do, but most of the local surrounding cities do not.
Just like if I'm in a R1 area, wouldn't want a commercial driveway cut through my subdivision or my, wherever, unless it would require permission by the property owners on either side.
A subdivision may be a little different than off of a major thoroughfare.
It's all the necessary we have.
Yes.
That's all I have.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions?
Yeah, I have a question pertaining to property maintenance sidewalk issues.
Yes, sir.
I know I'm trying to educate myself, so bear with me. I'm grateful for the list of the letters that were sent out, but it's ordinance 520.100, which you gave to me earlier today.
Okay.
And I just need to be educated on this, and also why we're sending letters out and threatening to put liens on homes, and do we have costs or companies that repair our sidewalks for us? And do we have an estimated cost of that? Because in one or two of these instances, first of all, they couldn't get anybody to come back with any kind of bid, or they never got back and they kept calling. And the one of the bids that came back for a very small sidewalk was $10,000. And I thought that was astronomical.
I agree.
So what happens when people are trying to do the right thing, and they buy a historic home, and they put, you know, a quarter million dollars in it to fix it up, and then they're, now they're tuck pointing at another $10,000, and they get these letters from us saying that we're going to put a lien on their house? I have concerns about that. I need to be educated.
So in the 2022 board comments of things that they would like to see, the board said increased focus on unsafe and deteriorating sidewalks. So we took that, you all took that, or this body took that, and created a new sidewalk reimbursement plan that would give folks up to $750 back of what they spent. 50% up to $750. That letter was then communicated, that policy was then communicated to, I'm going to say approximately 30 identified properties last, actually, not even last year, in 2021. Then last year, we identified, I would say, the worst of the worst. And earlier this year, so they were provided a year with the information they got, they were given a letter that their sidewalk was in violation of policy. Which also falls in line with the survey that I just mentioned. There's two questions on there about existing transportation networks and existing parks and recreation. Sidewalks, yeah, sidewalks on each of those questions was one of the worst ratings that the city received. So we sent those letters, I want to say January, February. Gave them 30 days to either complete it, the repairs or the replacement, or get a contract. That letter also had information that if you needed information on contractors, reach out to us. We can give you, at least the local folks who have a business license, who can do that work for you. Gene took most of those calls, so I can't answer you how many calls he did or didn't take. Then we gave an extra 30 days, and then sent a follow-up letter, which is the letter that went out last week stating, kind of walking them through the process. Alderman Donovan had pointed out some of the things that you mentioned about using words like lien. We wanted to be very specific of the process, and we were. The second letter that went out, which you have a copy of, kind of walked them through what we're going to do over the next few months. And then the information I also gave you stated we're down to, five of those properties were city properties, which we have a bid due next week for those city properties to get our own done. There's five properties that we're going to repair or replace, our own sidewalks, including the one out front here. Okay. So that's five of the 18. Two of the 18 have already got the work done, and they participated or are participating in the reimbursement process. That leaves 11. Of the 11, three have reached out that they're planning to make the improvements here in the next few weeks, and we'll follow up with them, and that's kind of where things stand.
Okay, so I'm sure I'll be privy to the cost of what it would be for a sidewalk. I'm just, I'm just trying to get my arms around, would it be less expensive to use the same contractors we do for the city for these individuals that have to do this? Or could there, when you say there's a cost sharing with, did I understand you correctly that if the city puts it in? Okay, the city.
If you do your work on your sidewalk, and you fill out a form in advance, and funds are still available, and there's a limit on that and a budget, you can fill out the form, we'll come out when the rebar is set, make sure it's the code, we'll come out when it's poured and finished, make sure it's the code, and then you can submit your receipts for the work, and we'll reimburse you 50% up to $750.
Okay. So do you ask, do you agree then for a sidewalk the size of the person in question we talked about? $10,000?
$10,000 seems high, but I, you know, I don't know the thickness, I don't know the rebar, I don't know.
And there's also those historic stones that are original to the sidewalk, that might want to be kept there because of the historic value. I just would like to know what it's costing us, so I have a baseline to see why it's costing so much more for my constituents who are calling in and getting these wild prices.
It may be, it may just depend on the customer as well, because it sounds like some have already taken advantage of it and got a price that they approved. So we've got two bids out. One is for the city sidewalks, and we'll see what that cost is. That's based on the square footage. We know how many linear feet and how wide our sidewalks are, and the areas that we need to replace. For the other, we put out for a quote on, or a bid on linear, on linear footage. What is it going to cost per linear foot? And then we can then approach the homeowner and say, this is what it's going to cost for our contractor to come in, tear out, put the base in, put the concrete in, per linear foot. And we'll know that based on what we believe needs to be replaced at the houses. I can't tell you that number now, because I don't have it in bid form yet.
Okay, so if we did, we did that at those houses, right, then could they, could we put the sidewalks in and then bill them?
Yeah, we can bill them, and that's what our intention is, is to invoice them.
Because I'm thinking the city prices must be a heck of a lot more reasonable than what I'm assuming.
We don't know yet, but that is, if they don't get it done on their own and participate in the program, hopefully, we will then do this work.
Thank you, David. I think, I appreciate the explanation. I'm just curious as to what the cost is for the city, if I could have that information.
Well, you have to wait for the bids.
No, I understand.
There's coming.
I understand that, because I just want to see, you know, tomatoes, potatoes, or whatever, see what's going.
Well, keep in mind that the city is going to do some of the work ourselves. We're going to do the demolition of the sidewalks and then put the rock in, and then the contractor's going to come in, compact it, and then put the concrete back. So we're going to do half the work.
Unless I'm just off-base here, and I'm out in right field playing basketball, I think it'd be more cost-efficient for them to wait till we put the sidewalk in for them and then get billed, as opposed to paying $10,000 for a sidewalk. Anyway, thank you very much for the information on our follow-up. Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Dave. Chief Crump?
You have my report in front of you. Not a whole lot to report this month. We did hire, filled one of the two spots, hired Eli Isgrigs, came to us with two years' experience from Crystal City PD. And then we have four other applicants that we're working on now to fill the last remaining spot. We did, Alliance finished the property roof harvest, turned out great, got the ventilation and everything set up, so it's working great. As far as grants, we ordered the two MDTs from the grants, and I believe we also received a check for the K9 reimbursement, I think Sue said today just came in. We're just waiting on approval to order radios from the ARCA grant, and then we're also finishing up writing another grant for this year for the Homeland Security for the remaining digital radios for the control. Any question?
Has there been any discussion on mitigating the ventilation issues in the garage?
Yes, we did, and I just talked to Happy the other day. I think a lot of it was going to be timing with Alliance.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening, everyone. Everybody has my report. A lot of what's been going on since this report was written. Noticed the guys flushing throughout, flushing the water mains throughout the town, fire hydrants. While we're doing the flushing, we're also recording flow data on the hydrants for the fire protection. Once that's complete, we will go around, we'll repaint the fire hydrants according to the fire code, indicating how much available water is at that hydrant. Also recording exact locations of fire hydrants themselves while we're out there, and adding the new ones that have been installed since it was last recorded. Some of that work has been completed with the use of the back truck that we've been using. Some of you may have noticed the big truck around town. We've compiled a large list of items that we needed to complete with that. We're quickly knocking them out. We will, once that, once that truck goes back, I believe it goes back in, I think, eight days, we'll resume flushing at the other portions of town that weren't completed yet, so. Other than that, everything's in the report if you have any questions.
Steve, I have had some comments and stuff about the additional amount of street sweeping time we've seen, and I think that's greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Well, since we're past our compliments, I like the, you've given us some measure of the performance of the budget.
Yeah. So that is, it's newly added, I'm glad you noticed.
I like that, yeah.
So every year, there's a repair count that we have, and what's not used by the end of the year is returned to the city. So after five months, I'm 571 under budget, so.
Beautiful. So is this snapshot, are there any unexpected, maybe surprises?
Everything.
Everything. That's an acceptable answer. Okay, I like this. Will that be a part of the report then?
Yes. Now we're at the end of the year, you know, I'm like, hey, here's to you, you know.
Does transfer switch thing still no end in sight?
No.
So what's that going to do to our overall project?
It just extends the timeframe of the completion date.
So we can't finish without it?
Right. I know Bruce Terry just ordered another one. We don't have a delivery date on the one that we're expecting, but he just ordered another one for an outfit out of Festus, and it was a 54-week lead time on that one, so.
What's so odd about it, or what's so?
It's just new material, it's hard to get right now, I guess, so.
So circling back to the budget addition here, was the, I mean, I know we budgeted 22-7. So 22 that we've spent, what were they?
22, 7, 10 is what, if you took our repair account of $54,500 and broke it down to 12 months, that's what we should have spent to date.
Okay.
And at the end of the fifth month, 22,139 is what we have spent, so.
Thanks, Steve. No committee reports to review?
No, because the committee report is the Health Committee, Healthcare Committee, and that's in the agenda.
Got you. Move on to public comment. Anyone? Okay. We'll move on to the consent agenda.
Before we begin the consent agenda, there's a couple of things I was hoping to remove from the consent agenda today, table it to our next meeting, which would be Resolution 2023-30 and 2023-31, the appointment of persons to the Heritage Commission. I'd like to table that, and make a motion to do that.
Happy, I have another comment too, on 2023-29. You know, I mean, I see no dollar amount in there, just a fee schedule, you know, that Cochran wants to charge us. You know, we know the amount of footage we're going to do, we know approximately the amount of tonnage, you know, that we're going to do, and the dollar amount, why can't they give us something a little more concrete there rather than just a fee schedule? Because that could run into whatever they want to bill us.
So we did, we do it with the concrete, we're doing the same thing with the asphalt. It depends on how often they're needed. If we give a flat amount, then they have to, they have, we have to perform all of those duties. In this case, we just call them out when we feel it's necessary, or what we're going to do is have jokers call them out when they bring the product in. We find it's easier for time and materials to do it that way than to set up certain budget amount that they, that they have based on the amount of time that we think they're going to spend.
You know, and the one thing that really bothers me about that is they're really not doing anything underneath where we're paving. They're basically just, I mean, and, you know, everything we've done has always been a state-approved plant, you know, so that stuff's all tested, you know, before at least the plant and stuff, but just, I just didn't like that open-end contract and stuff. I'd rather them, surely they could give us some type of a cost estimate or something to go along with that, not just ask for a blank check.
Yeah, you can pull it, and we can request that, and see what the number comes back as. I think we spent $1,200 on the concrete testing. Again, that was open-ended.
Right.
And they were called out when they needed to be called out.
Well, but that's something I guess I didn't understand, is we're calling them out on an as-needed basis.
Right.
I'm going to, I'm going to, sorry to interrupt, but it's a consent agenda, so that's usually meaning that, you know, vote up or down on the entire consent agenda. If you want to have a thorough discussion about any of the particular items, you should make a motion to remove it from the consent agenda second and approve that. And then if you want to table something to the next month, that would be a separate motion. So there was a motion to, I think, remove Resolution 30 and 31 from the consent agenda. I don't know if there's going to be a second to that, but if you're having.
I'll second it.
First and second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And then Bob, you wanted to make a motion to remove, which one?
29, Resolution 29.
29, I want to make a motion to remove that also from the consent agenda.
Second there.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
While we're at it, I'd like to have discussion about 33, 2023, about that 33, but yeah.
Do you want to have a remove, or do you just want to have a discussion?
I want to have discussion, but instead of have discussion, we have to have a remove from the consent.
Correct, that's right. So is that your motion? So is that your motion?
That's my motion, is to remove.
One second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
But if you're, okay with everything else, then if you're appropriate to do a motion to approve the consent agenda with those items removed, if those approved, if that's your inclination.
So the Treasurers' report is on minutes.
So you're really talking about the minutes, the Treasurers' report, and Resolution 2023-32.
And I make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the changes that we're already agreed upon.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Take those items as individual, as total, as 2023-29.
Okay.
But there's discussion about the asphalt.
Okay. Okay, so we, we pulled out Resolution 2023-29, Resolution authorizing the mayor to accept a cost proposal for 2, for 2023 asphalt overlay testing services with Cochran Engineering. So we can open that up for discussion.
Well, I think I already expressed my, my opinion on it and stuff like that, and I think, I think they should come back with something a little more detailed.
So you want me to table it?
I want to table it. Motion to table it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to table Resolution 30 and 31.
I'll second it.
Okay. So the motion is to table Resolution 2023-30 and Resolution 2023-31, which are both resolutions appointing members to the St. Genevieve Heritage Commission. We have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So that'll bring us to Resolution 2023-33, which is a resolution authorizing the city administrator to enter into a renewal agreement for the Missouri Chamber Federation Benefit Plan Trust for Employee Health Dental and Vision Insurance. And these would be plans for 2023, '24.
Discussion?
Yes.
So I've, I've seen the renewal, the Healthcare Renewal Committee plans, and I realize that this is a budgetary issue that we'll probably deal with later. But I would propose reinstating the insurance benefits that we offered to our employees prior to the Proposition P passage in '17 or '18, whenever that was, that allowed for paying family benefits.
So you're talking 100%?
Yes.
Yeah.
So again, I realize that that's not an issue for tonight, but if we're approving this based on the recommendations, I just wanted noted that that would be my recommendation for that discussion.
So does this need to be tabled and discussed later? I make a.
No, we need to approve this to get the insurance benefits in, to our agreement with the company. So I'm fine with, and I'll make a motion to approve that with the caveat that at some point when we discuss the budget on that, that would be my recommendation.
Well, technically, your motion is to approve the resolution that you're just noting for the minutes that you want to have further discussion. for the minutes that you want to have further discussion about the actual plan benefits that we made.
Correct.
Okay.
And I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. I think we got all those items. Okay, that's going to move us down the agenda to old business, which would be Bill Number 4551, which is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a proposal for professional services with Cochran Engineering for the Pierre Marquette Park Trail Rehabilitation Project. This is a second reading.
Second.
A motion and a second.
Is this a second reading?
This is a second reading.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Kleibhorn?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Bennett?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Steiger?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill Number 4551 now becomes ordinance 4476.
Take us to new business, Bill Number 4555, which is an ordinance authorizing the city treasurer to write off uncollectibles from the water, wastewater accounts of the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri.
Discussion?
Okay.
I know this may not be germane to the topic at hand, but I had a conversation with my experts here in the office, and we still have a 15% late fee on anything that's water-related, that they miss a bill and everything else like that. I would be interested in revising that 15%, especially in these times. I think it's pretty steep, and I don't know if anybody else agreed with me or not. I just think 15% is kind of hefty when you see if you pay before this date and then you miss it, because life happens, right? And things aren't going well for a lot of our people out there. And I just want to throw it out there that maybe this is something you want to revisit. I know it may not be germane to this, but I just want to toss that out there. I don't know exactly what to do with that. Maybe get on the agenda to discuss--
Maybe a work session?
A work session. Could we, would, I make a motion to put on a work session so we can talk about it.
I would second that.
Thank you, sir.
Can we still discuss this yet, though, or not?
Oh, absolutely.
Yes.
These accounts that are listed here, are those, were those owners of the property at the time or were those renters?
I think it's a split between them. But what we do is we take them off the books, but they're not taken out of the system. So if they would come back to town, we would then get that money or ask for--
But were these rental properties? Because we passed an ordinance a while back, didn't we, that said that we can go after the owner of the property?
Right, and then if we collect, we then give it back to the property owner.
Oh.
Okay. But not all those owners.
Let me, I'm seeking clarification now. The issue at hand is that these accounts will be written off and that these individuals are not eligible to reinstate an account. And so this is clear. Is that the issue?
Yeah.
Okay. So I mean, I don't fully disagree with Gary, but I mean, the 15% impact seems to be apples and oranges with that.
That's why, that's why I said it may not be germane to this topic. It just popped in my mind that it's kind of steep, and I'm glad we can talk about it later day at a work session. But this works for me.
Okay, so to be clear, that's not a consideration in this bill, meaning that these amounts that are listed on these delinquent accounts--
That is correct.
--will not continue to accrue a 10% penalty?
They will stop accruing. They will be left on the books in case that person returns, and then we will collect it.
Right.
But we're not--
We're not actively trying to collect that.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you.
So I make a motion at this point, oh, sorry, we have other talking. Not bad. I make a motion to go ahead and approve this.
Okay.
I'll second that.
First and second?
Roca?
Oh, sorry.
Read a second to me.
That's right. Oh, where is it?
No, I have talked to--
Okay, yeah. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Okay.
There's a motion and second made to put on the future agenda, the discussion of those rates.
Oh, I made a motion to put on the work session to talk about the rates, and I was seconded by my friend, by Mike, Mr. Alderman Rainey. That's where you are.
Okay. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Okay. Move on to Bill Number 4556, which is an ordinance of the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to sign a deed dedicating a portion of Division Street to the city of St. Genevieve.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion on the topic? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll move on to Bill Number 4557, which is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a revised cooperative agreement with St. Genevieve County for the collection of city taxes.
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion on this topic?
Happy, I want to go back to the point of, I don't know what we call them, special assessments. Are we clearly defined and bound by this agreement now that the county has to collect those?
The county won't collect them?
The county will not. It's very similar to the previous year's agreements. It's a little different format, and it's less specific about how they allocate the percentage of fees that they receive. But that's not our concern, I guess. But they're not going to take any efforts to collect those special tax bills.
So was that just by their saying no or by?
You've had an agreement with them that has excluded that for, I think, two previous years, certainly the previous year, I think, two previous years. They don't want to do it.
Okay. Believe there was a first and a second, correct? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion for a second reading.
Got a motion for a second reading?
I'll second.
Whatever.
Do we need a second reading on this tonight? Discussion, I guess. I'll ask discussion with the motion on the floor. I'm opposed in general to second readings on the same nights. Is there any time crunch on this that has to be?
We're 30 days behind.
We are on this one? Okay. Okay, fair enough.
That's why.
Okay. So I have a motion and a second for a second reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, second reading of Bill Number 4557, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a revised cooperative agreement with St. Genevieve County for the collection of city taxes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Roca, please.
Alderman Steiger?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Bennett?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Kleibhorn?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill Number 4557 now becomes ordinance 4477.
Okay. Any other business to discuss? Okay. So we'll move down the list here to some communication here between myself and the board. We do have some vacancies for board liaisons to some committees. It would be, no, I believe there's five in total that we need to address tonight. My preference, I know there's a couple currently seated board liaisons. I would like to start fresh, if possible, and reappoint members to each of the five committees. I've spoken with a few people, have expressed some interest in certain committees. So I would open that up to discussion. If anybody, I mean, we can start, I guess, start at the top here with tourism.
Right, so the tourism liaison was not voted back in office, so we still need somebody if they want to volunteer to--
I show some interest, so I'd volunteer for that position unless somebody else wants to.
Anybody else like to toss their hat in that ring? Joe?
You're officially appointed to tourism.
That would move us to planning and zoning. Is there anybody that would like to take on that role?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to take on the opportunity for planning and zoning.
Okay. Alderman Smith volunteered. Anybody else like to be considered or any objections? Okay. Alderman Smith?
Thank you, sir.
St. Genevieve Television?
I've had some requests to nominate Jeff for that.
Yeah, that's a good time.
I talked to Jeff and he's interested in that as well.
Okay, Jeff is. Okay, so Jeff's, anybody else want to be considered for that? Okay, we'll appoint Jeff Beidman. We'll move down the list to Heritage Commission.
I would like to work as a liaison for this commission, sir.
Okay. Alderman Smith. Anybody else like to be considered? Okay. Alderman Smith to the Heritage Commission, and then last but not least is the park board.
Again, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to take on the park board if that's your will.
Okay.
I would be willing also, depending on the day of the week, I would work schedule.
When does--
Fourth Monday.
That would be fine, too.
Okay. Anybody, anybody have any thoughts or discussion on that as far as?
If Alderman Smith really wants it, that's fine. I feel bad sitting here not being on any committee if he made me to be on. So if he wants it, that's fine, if anything. You could do a call, yeah.
So say, can we only have one?
Is that voted?
I think you lose consistency if you own it the same person, meeting after meeting. So you only meet once a month, anyway.
Okay.
But are they a voting member?
Is that a voting member on the park?
Just liaison.
And they contend.
Yeah.
Mondays would work for me if you have too many other things going on.
Then I will defer to Alderman Bennett.
Okay. Alderman Bennett?
You like parks, you like trees, it's close.
And it's close.
There you go. Okay. Wonderful. Thank you, everybody, for that. Believe, we will adjourn this meeting at this time.
Work session.
Yeah, Bob, I believe your items have been addressed in the work session.
Motion to adjourn?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Before we dive into these items, there has been a topic of discussion regarding a potential conflict of interest between the city and the IDC, but more specifically between the city, myself as mayor of the city, and my father, Tom Keim, as president of the IDC currently. Happy and Mark and I did have discussion on the topic, just to provide full transparency. So with that, I'll let Mark kind of fill you in on how he interprets that.
So generally, I don't like to give my legal opinions in open session, but this one's pretty clear cut. There is no legal conflict of interest. Well, certainly not now because there is an arrangement between the city and the IDC with regard to the schematics and the plans and subdivision. I think they're going to deliver, I guess, at the next meeting, but there's no personal interest or nepotism or any of the legal prohibitions that may apply in other situations with regard to a mayor or even Alderman or employees. This is so far removed because neither the mayor nor his father have any personal interests in either side of the transaction. And quite frankly, in a really any town, whether they're big or small, there should be people that are related to each other on different various boards or entities. So there's no legal conflict at all. Now, however you want to handle communication is completely up to the city, but there's no legal issues with regard to it. I've looked into it. I have no concerns over the mayor being directly involved with regard to any interactions with the IDC. And vice versa, I have no issues with his father serving in that capacity should the city have any sort of further arrangements with the IDC. So I know it's been brought up from at least one or two individuals, so we looked into it and I don't have any concerns.
Great.
Thank you.
Any questions or anything? Any questions? Great.
Anything else?
Thank you, Mark. Have a good evening, sir. Yeah, great. All right, we'll move on to approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We'll move to item number one on this work session agenda, which would be the salary study.
The board budgeted a salary study for this budget year to see where we were with our employees, police, administrators, to see if we were out of line because there was a question of whether we were hiring people too high, too low, not following proper numbers. So we went up for quotes on that. Had two companies come back with quotes. We chose CBiz to do the work for us. And Ryan Blackwell from CBiz is with us tonight to run through this compensation study. So I've copied this up. It'll be up on the screen as well, just that the screen's not that big. So you might not be able to see the words as clearly. But Ryan's going to give you an idea of what they went through to come to the conclusions that they want to present tonight. What we're planning on is giving you an overview. You can then, if you want to discuss it later at another work session, we can. When we finally make some final decisions on how you want to proceed with it, then we're going to have a meeting with the employees and show them how this was looked at and what changes there may be. So Ryan, I'm going to leave it up to you.
Yeah, sounds good. Thank you, Happy. Can you guys hear me okay?
Oh, yes.
And how much time do we have, Happy? Do we have a limit? I assume quicker the better, but any sort of timeframe of what you want?
We were shooting for, when we talked, I think it was like 30 minutes and but you've got time for questions. I don't want to cut back on, I kind of want somebody may have a question about.
Sure, sure. Okay. And then I'm trying to make sure my screen, it looks like it says host disabled. I don't know if you know how to initiate that or if it even matters if the screen's too small.
See if that works.
There we go. All right, can you guys see my screen now?
Yes.
All right, perfect. So as Happy mentioned, my name's Ryan Blackwell. I'm a director on the team here with CBiz. My colleague Tyler worked on this as well. He was unable to attend tonight with the conflict. But we were the project team working closely with Happy throughout this process. Today, in our session, I'll give you a brief interview or brief overview about CBiz, sort of who we are, what we do. We'll touch on methodology, so talk about kind of the steps that we took to get to the end results part of this compensation study. We'll obviously talk about some of the results that we found, get into some recommendations. And then, of course, we should have some time for some questions at the very end to conclusion of the presentation. So a little bit about us, CBiz as a company. We're actually a pretty big company. We're publicly traded. We have, you know, about 100 offices across the US, within upwards of 6,000 employees in total, you know, serving a variety of different types of clients, you know, really early across the US. The CBiz Competition Consulting Team, which I'm a part of, is a much, much smaller group within that broad organization. So we're based here in St. Louis, Missouri, not too far from you all. We are the national compensation practice for CBiz. So while we're based in St. Louis, we serve clients essentially from coast to coast. We have a lot of experience in the public sector, so working with other municipalities in Missouri and even beyond. So certainly kind of right in our wheelhouse with what we've done with Happy on this project. So into the methodology. So overall, the scope is listed here on this next slide. So we looked at base salary across the organization for all the positions that are currently existing in the organization. We also looked at a few jobs that Happy is looking at adding potentially in the future. We also did consider total cash compensation, which is base plus any bonus that might be provided out in the market. But really, the main focus is base salary and making sure that we're competitive there and establishing, you know, a structure for the organization. So that second line there is development of salary structure. So it's taking that raw market data and putting it into a system that Happy and team can use going forward to administer compensation into the future and help keep track of what that market competitive range is across the organization. Another key piece of this is comparing the market to current salary levels. So, you know, we're looking at how pay, how salaries currently look at the organization, comparing that to market. And then we have some or provided some recommendations to Happy on potential pay increases, right? So if there were employees that were below market, obviously you want to get those employees to at least within that range. And then we also had what we call a compression analysis, where we look at where employees are placed within the range and try to determine if that's appropriate based on their time within the job. So a couple of different ways that we look at implementation side of things. And we'll get into both of those in a little bit more detail as we progress through the presentation. But then lastly, with the scope is just overall recommendations. So some key tenants that Happy can use going into the future to make sure that the system stays competitive over time. So the first step as part of this process was initiating the project. So we had a planning meeting with Happy at the very beginning. And so that was our opportunity to get to know the organization a little bit better, understand challenges facing the organization, goals, expectations for this analysis, and also align with the compensation philosophy for the organization. So, you know, that's really where, where does the city compete for talent? Where do you recruit employees from? Where do you boost them to, right? And making sure that our analysis aligns with philosophy of the organization. Another key piece of this, these initial steps, are collecting information from the city. So we sent Happy a data request and we asked for employee information. So employee names, names, job titles, salary, performance scores, organizational charts, right? A bunch of different information that helps us run kind of our full suite of analyses. A key piece of this is collecting job-specific information. So we collected job descriptions from the organization, but we also launched what we call a JAQ, Job Analysis Questionnaire, or JAQ for short. What the JAQ is, is a essentially a questionnaire that is distributed to each employee within the organization and asks them to tell us about their job. So it's going to ask things like, what's the primary purpose of your role? What are the primary duties and responsibilities that you're responsible for within that job? Also addressing education requirements, experience requirements, knowledge, skills that are required of the job. So that was really beneficial in making sure that we have real current-time, up-to-date job information that we can then use in our analysis. So the job documentation, as I referred to within the JAQ process, I mean, really, we're concerned with essential functions, duties, responsibilities, qualifications. And really, one of the big takeaways here is that, you know, we're really reading each of those questionnaires as well as the job descriptions, trying to understand job duties, responsibilities, specific qualifications for the role, and then match to the market on a duties-to-duties basis as opposed to matching based on job title. So sometimes organizations will match purely based on title. There are different, different organizations have different titling conventions, right? And so in one organization, the title might be an accountant. In another organization, it might be accounting supervisor or accounting specialist. So really, by digging into the duties being performed, we're able to be much more accurate with our benchmarking to the market. Labor markets, this is another key component of any compensation study. When you do a study like this, there are really three characteristics that can influence salary levels within an organization, those being size of organization, geographic location, and then also industry. So with size of organization, this plays the biggest role in compensation levels at the top of the organization. So certainly, city administrator size is going to affect that position more than any other position in the organization. As you move down the organization, size becomes less and less of an influence on those salary levels, right? So if you think about the city administrator, for example, if the city were to double, triple, quadruple in size, right? That city, you know, that top level job, it's going to become more complex, broader scope, right? And so typically, compensation levels increase, right? They're correlated with that increase in size. On the flip side of the organization, when you think about, you know, an administrative assistant, for example, or a front desk receptionist, if the organization grows, you're not necessarily going to pay those types of roles more money. You'll hire one, two, three, four more to keep up with that increase in workload. Geography is another important consideration. As you all are aware, there are certain areas in Missouri nationally that have very different salary levels or cost of labor, right? The biggest examples you think of are New York City, right? You know, salary levels as well as cost of living in that area is well above much of the rest of the US. In St. Louis, we're, you know, much lower than New York City. In St. Genevieve, even is a little bit lower than St. Louis, right? Salary levels tend to be a little lower than larger metropolitan areas in the state. So for this analysis, we're really focusing on more of the St. Genevieve area and kind of that surrounding area for the basis of salary data we're collecting. Industry is the last component within the labor markets that we consider. We have a lot of industries out there, right? You have your for-profit, nonprofit, government, government and governmental-related organizations. Some of your jobs within the city are only found in other cities, right? Other municipalities. So we're a little bit limited in that we have to look at other cities for those particular jobs. There are jobs within the organization that are found in any, any organization, right? So lots of your roles in you administer support, accounting, finance, IT, right? Those types of roles are found more broadly. So we are able to look a little bit more broadly to come up with the true market for those types of roles. So for this analysis, as you see, we're looking at cities, other municipalities as our primary focus, but then looking a little bit more broadly for those jobs that are found more broadly in broad industry as well. So getting into the actual analysis piece, so once we've established, you know, the initial job, you know, job duties, et cetera, through the job analysis questionnaire, we've identified the appropriate labor market characteristics. That's when we're going to the market data, right? And coming up with a market value for each job. Part of that is linked to the compensation philosophy. So for this analysis, we're using a 50th percentile comp philosophy for the city. So what that means is we're using the 50th percentile, also known as the middle of the market, the point in the market where half of organizations pay more and half pay less. We're using that for the basis of designing our salary ranges for the city and also using that to group jobs together within the salary structure. A note about that 50th percentile philosophy is that it's a very common comp philosophy. In that second bullet here, you'll see that approximately 85% of organizations choose to target the middle of the market as the philosophy. So you're certainly within kind of typical market norms there by targeting that median of the market. So we go to the published survey data to make matches, right? So matching based on size, geography, industry, as well as job duties. We're using our published survey database to pull in data for this analysis as well as data from the Missouri municipality. The job matching piece we talked about. Sorry, did I hear?
Just a question. We've got your report here. It's really pretty extensive and we're all looking at it here in front of us. And I don't know if the rest of the group, but can we maybe jump forward? Because we have all this data that you're going through now. Can we maybe go through to the results of your report?
Yeah, you guys do a little bit about methodology. Yeah, Happy to jump ahead a little bit. So all the way to results, you think? Okay, perfect. Okay, so page 20 is where I'm on now. That's the page with the graph. So here, what we've displayed is a graphical representation of how pay at the city compares to the market results. So in this graph, we have market-based salary across the horizontal axis. On the bottom of the graph, we've got current salary levels currently being paid at the city across the vertical axis. And then we have these, you know, we have some dots here and some lines in the middle. So in this graph, each green dot represents a job that we benchmarked as part of the study, okay? So that's simply plotted on the graph, you know, going down to market and then over to current salary levels. For each green dot, there's a corresponding gold dot, which represents the market value of each job that was included in the analysis. And then you'll see the two lines. So the green line is the city's pay line. That's just a line at best fit. And then the gold line is the market pay line. So you can see here that really, the city's pretty close on balance, you know, across the organization, a little bit below that middle of the market. As you see, those green dots, more green dots below the gold line than above the gold line. So but overall, you know, pretty, you know, fairly clean. When we get to the implementation, we'll be able to see some more specific recommendations for potential pay increases. The next two exhibits that we're getting into have to do with the salary ranges that we've designed for the city. So this first one, we're calling it the general pay structure. This is for all non-police positions within the organization. We have a separate structure for the police force. But I mean, pretty straightforward, especially if you guys have seen a salary structure before. We're just calling each range a number, right? 1 through 10. We have the minimum, midpoint, and maximum of each range listed. The minimum is meant to be that minimum competitive entry level pay for each position within that range. Midpoint approximates that 50th percentile that we talked about a few slides ago. And then the maximum is just the maximum value that a job within that range can bring to the organization. Range spreads and midpoint differentials just have to do with how the structure is built, right? So the spreads are how wide the range is. The midpoint differentials are how far apart the ranges are from each other. Both of those do increase as you move up the organization, which reflects what we typically see as trends in the market data. The next slide, slide 22, staff jobs by grade. So here's really the final class, really how each job is classified within the structure. Again, this goes directly back to the market data and the market analysis. So 1 through 10, here you can see how, you know, jobs are grouped together across the organization. Happy and I obviously have already met and reviewed these groupings and these classifications and had a chance for some feedback and back and forth. And this is the final, kind of the final setup that we have for the non-police positions. Sticking with the general pay structure, so here we have another graph for you. And this shows where employees are paid relative to the assigned salary ranges. So in this exhibit, each blue dot represents a single employee within the organization. The leftmost gold bar represents the range minimum. The middle axis is the range midpoint. And then the rightmost gold line represents the range maximum for each, each of the grades, 1 through 10. So you'll see we do have some jobs that are currently paid below the minimum of the range. So as part of our recommendation, it is, as I mentioned earlier, bring these employees up to at least the minimum of the range, right? Get them to within that market competitive range.
Police pay structure is next on the screen.
Ryan?
Yeah?
As part of your methodology, did you take into consideration the 100% medical, dental, and optical that's going to be paid to our employees now? And also, how about educations, degrees, diplomas, certifications, and licenses?
Yeah, so this analysis just looks at base pay.
So it doesn't look at the credentials?
You know, benefits, medical, retirement, paid time off. All of that is not included in what you're seeing here. It's just looking at that base salary rate.
Because I would assume that if one's getting paid 100% dental, medical, and optical and they didn't have the degrees that you would need in St. Louis and the certifications and licenses, that it would be a little bit different than what you have before us. Is this true?
Can you say that one more time? I'm sorry.
If they don't have the education certifications and licenses that most of the persons in St. Louis that you get this data from or this average, and they're getting 100% compensation, would this skew your data?
So what we're benchmarking on is based on that job information that we collected.
I understand, but exactly.
So that's what we're using to benchmark.
Okay, but I just want you to know that within statistics and number analysis, because I've done that a lot, I don't know if this is tomatoes for tomatoes or potatoes to tomatoes because I'd like to know if you are running against the people who get 100% insurance paid for and those who have education.
Yeah, so with the insurance, the insurance piece is completely separate from this.
So but it's still compensation?
Yeah, you're right. It is. Yeah, the scope of this analysis was, did not include benefits. So you're right, you absolutely could look at benefits.
I think that would be a good thing.
More of a total compensation, I guess, picture.
Including.
Could influence sort of how an organization wants to position themselves based on base salary.
Yeah, that, not just compensation, but also education and everything else. Because I used to work up in St. Louis and I don't think you can get most of these jobs you're taught in both without degrees.
Yeah, yeah. And so typically, if we're reading the job documentation and a certain degree is required, we're trying to benchmark the best we can to similar jobs that have similar qualifications and experience.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question also, Ryan?
Yeah. Yeah.
Initially, you mentioned St. Louis, but you said that you're comparing this with other agencies that are near our area. They're comparable size as St. Genevieve, correct?
Correct, yeah.
But again, just to qualify, we don't know if those persons are getting paid 100% compensation either. So I just, as a person who has a PhD, I'm confused with the data if it's not comparing tomatoes to tomatoes and potatoes to pears. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, so what we're not doing is comparing directly to St. Louis positions. If there is St. Louis area data in the analysis, we're adjusting that to reflect compensation levels in your area.
Right.
You know, Ryan, I'm going to jump in here also and stuff because, you know, my hopes of this salary study would be, you know, not only salary, but a complete package. You know, because that's what we base everything on now.
Right.
You know, total cost, total experience, total whatever that employee expects of the job.
Vacation time.
Exactly.
Vacation time.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I can't understand how we can have a clear picture here that we don't have all of those things.
Incorporating to your analysis.
Exactly. I'm disappointed.
Yeah, I'm disappointed too.
Well, respectfully though, I would say I don't know that that is what I was hoping to learn from this presentation. I think you're on the doorsteps of a future conversation that we must have. I don't know that we're there yet. I'm hoping to learn more about his presentation here to see how we apply that to that future conversation.
But you can't really go off this.
I think we could argue that at a later time.
It's only one spoke of the wheel, though. I mean, you've got to have.
I don't disagree with the spirit of your question. What I disagree with is saying that that discussion I feel like might be displaced right now because we're trying to learn the methodology of this report, then take this report and see. I mean, the goal is to be competitive, right? The goal is not to lose employees.
On all fronts.
On all fronts, yeah.
But to be competitive.
Best value for the employer and the employee.
You go in and ask for a job and stuff, do you just ask what the pay is or do you ask what the whole package is?
Couldn't agree more. I just think you're steps ahead of where we are today.
Right, so I don't think this covers what we're looking for.
So Ryan, is this a preliminary or are we to expect more information in the future? Or is this it?
Yeah, so that's going back to the scope of the project, right? So as part of this engagement, you know, our, what we are engaged to do is look at base salary and not the total package. With that being said, we would be happy to add, you know, a benefits component to this and look at more of a total rewards comparison. But that's sort of, that would be sort of additional project, an additional step to add on to what we've done here. So I guess, to answer your question, for the scope of our current engagement, this is sort of the final results. But in the future, like you said, if you guys wanted to consider, you know, other benefits as well and look at a total rewards viewpoint, we can certainly work with you on that and fill in those gaps after this piece.
Working in HR for a Fortune 50 company, I would prefer that the compensation package be all-inclusive.
Yeah.
Okay? Otherwise, you're just giving me base pay from here to there, which is not a good analysis for what I'm looking for.
But I think comparatively speaking and being on the insurance committee previously as an employee, it's not uncommon for a municipal government to offer the employee benefits, the employee themselves 100% insurance coverage.
Well, this may be true, but I'd like to see the data. Because you can't do anything without the numbers.
So Happy, is this something?
The board requested that we find the high or the low, medium, and high on the salary. This is what we based it on was, what are the job descriptions? What are we compared to others in the market? Whether there's benefits, there were no benefits that wanted to be included. That was not a part of the discussion because we were in transition as well on our insurance. And in our committee discussions, we find that many cities pay 100% for the employee, but not the rest that we pay for employees.
Okay. I'd love to be on that committee in the future and I still would like to see the different data. I'm not comfortable even discussing this.
But you're looking at, are we competitive in the market?
I'm looking at your salaries.
Correct.
But that is not the complete packet.
But people are looking at what are our salaries, are our salaries within what the market range is?
But within the market range, you also have to incorporate all the years of education and training and certifications and licenses and what we offer them for benefits. That is the compensation package. This is a part of it. This was piecemeal.
This is what was requested.
Okay, now I'd agree, and that's fine, then I think that you didn't have people who understood data requesting this in the future. And I love you all and I respect you, but I think we need to do a more comprehensive job.
Well, and I'll jump in here and I guess we weren't clear as a board and stuff of what we expected.
Right.
You know, so that's not this company's fault, but maybe it's, this is the first step and we need the second step.
Yeah.
For our own internal analysis.
Well, Gary, certainly few people can argue with you and win that argument.
You can always argue about data.
Agree with you. So I'm with you in spirit. I think you need to look, if we go back in the history of this thing, we were looking for a baseline to prevent losing employees or prevent overpaying for employees in the current marketplace. There are those insurance discussions that need to take place. I just think it's a future discussion. I don't know, I think we've got the deliverable we asked for and I think it's useful.
Oh, okay, for the data that we asked for. Ryan, thank you for the data that we asked for. This is a good result, I'm sure, but I'm just saying we need more data analyzed.
I won't argue that.
And you have budget room to extend this into some other area that you want. We just need to specify what that is and then engage C-Biz if you want to continue this.
Is this something that this company does?
Ryan, you guys do work on the compensation packages and include that, don't you?
Yeah, yeah, we do. Yeah, we do benefits analysis as well. And so what we would do is we would look at, yeah, you know, what benefits you're offering compared to what's found in the market, try to quantify the value of your benefits package compared to the market and then add that together to come up with a total compensation picture.
Now, so they also have the job descriptions, which have the education requirements. Now, if we're looking at compensating more for certain education, then that would be something that would have to be included in there.
To incorporate that, we can't hire somebody with a master's degree to go work the front desk or collect water bills.
And you don't need a person with a master's degree to collect water bills and stuff, but I do need an apples-to-apples comparison of data. Otherwise, it's skewed. That's all I'm saying.
Are you, but are you looking at just certain jobs that would have that kind of skew whereas, you know, your baseline employees would not? I mean, if you're looking for a post-certification for the police officer, is that your minimum? And then are you looking at other education?
I would look for compensation with anything where we feel that they have to have education. And I also want the data re-massaged and re-analyzed with respect to 100% compensation because that is astronomical. That is a gift. Most people don't have that. I don't know other cities that do or don't, but I want to see a comparison.
Well, you want to see the, you want to see what cities are offering it?
I want to see.
Or do you want just the numbers?
I'd ask, what started this conversation? Were we having high turnover and what started this discussion to have this study done?
Right.
We had no idea where we were. We had no idea.
But did we have people running out the door?
Yes. I think purportedly we had people that were potentially going to leave.
Okay.
And we had people that we were hiring and we didn't know where they should be placed in the compensation scale.
So we can use this as a tool, but we'll have to either pay somebody for additional study or we're going to have to come up with what a total compensation package would look like. Because if we're just using baseline pay, base salary, we now have a tool for that, but we have to look at the total package, I would assume. So if we're looking at, you know, any of the different positions, we just have part of a good start, but we don't really have a total package of, or total view.
Agreed.
Of comparing those positions. Is that safe to say?
Comparing them from other industry or under other cities or other counties.
Correct, okay.
Yeah, for a comparable type work. Because they went through the job descriptions and then matched those up. That's how that came about.
So can we ask Ryan to come up with a cost estimate on what it's going to cost to implement that other data to give us what we were needing or what we were looking for? Or do we have to do that at an Alderman meeting or?
You're going to have to approve it at another Alderman meeting because it'll be an extra.
But we can ask him now to come up with the cost.
And this wouldn't require.
Because he's already got most of the data. He only has to plug in a few more variables.
And I would also like to, I asked for the job descriptions and qualifications earlier and I got those and I reviewed those. And I, still, HR is just drilling in my brain. I would still like to have the time to review those and have conversations with the committee, I mean, with the Board of Aldermen about what I think and what I think experts in the arena expect certain employees to have for certain positions.
But I think that's overstepping our role as an Alderman.
I don't think so. I think it's our role to help in any way we can and I think that's part of our job.
I think that's why we pay Happy. And Happy works for us. I know.
So I'd like to think about adding this to the agenda and putting a committee together to reevaluate those job descriptions and requirements.
I think that we have an ordinance that prohibits that.
Which ordinance?
Interfering in the daily activities of the city employees.
Which ordinance?
Well, you do have one. We do have Happy hired to take care of some of that stuff. But I guess my question is, are we, what are we planning on doing with this data? That's my question. I mean, do we need to go further? Because I think this is just one tool that we have. And so are we really worried about retention and future employees' total compensation so that we're competitive enough that we're going to spend another X amount of dollars to study this more? I guess I don't know how severe the problem was and do we need to go further with this?
So the board felt that there was the potential that we weren't paying our, paying new employees enough, where to start them? And also, are we competitive with our neighbors? And we've had, there's been other studies at, you know, at other cities around here as well. So we're not unique in trying to find out what that, what those numbers are. But if we're going to give people raises or they're going to get raises, are we, is there a cap at some point too? And that we're overpaying somebody for a position?
Yeah, we were looking for both, you know, underpay, overpay. I don't know what ordinance we're talking about here when we're talking about, I guess, your job responsibilities when it comes to job descriptions, but I don't know that the job descriptions is part of this at all. That's another whole thing and I.
You're right.
Have faith that you can establish those job descriptions without board approval.
I mean, I have and I have in the past. We, it's always been the administrator that has done the job descriptions with assistance from the department heads, but it's always stayed in administration.
And you've had discussion with Ryan about those job descriptions in detail?
No, because that was part of what we didn't approve when we went through this was trying to redo all the job descriptions because we had just done those two years ago.
So he used those? Okay. So we have two-year-old job description data that we gave to him for this study?
Except for what we've updated, you know, in the last, but yeah.
So if we can establish what the board wants, I'm sorry, Tom. If we can establish what the board wants to compare, I mean, I would be fine with Happy or whoever he designates contacting the agencies around us and not paying more money for a salary study if we're just going to compare what the insurance benefits are in areas around us. I mean, we had in the insurance committee, you know, the insurance company will tell us what other agencies are doing and they're not biased. I mean, that's a, I would think a fair representation of what is out there without paying money to help acquire that. But if the board wants more than that, then we could discuss that. But again, I think, I think level of education comes into play if we're going to offer some type of a step plan and fund that step plan. But if we're hiring patrol officers, the same as other cities are hiring patrol officers or city clerks or receptionists, the same as other municipal agencies, I don't see why we need to dive too much deeper than what we've done and we're looking at a compensation package.
But again, I'm not talking about police officers. I'm talking more about those where education should be required.
Right.
So police officers off the table. I still think that we need to delve into this.
But I think that is something that's in this study. They looked at in the tier one and two pay schedule what their qualifications were and what their education was. But they didn't get into benefits.
We listed, we listed the different jobs, the different jobs, police, corporal sergeant. We also set up with the police department as a comparison that there is a step plan that could include if you're going to hire somebody with a certain amount of education, you could move them into a different slot. But we were leaving that as up to the board that if you wanted to adopt it for the police or if you wanted to adopt it citywide or if you don't want to adopt it at all and just have the bottom, mid, and high range, and then we apply as we see fit.
And I would amend that some because it says required qualification. It's not necessarily education. But if we're requiring education, you know, for some position, then that's listed in the job description anyways.
Ryan, I'm going to back up here just a second. I want to first apologize a bit, you know, for basically saying this is not what I was expecting and stuff. This is what we asked for and this is what we got. So I do want to apologize for that and stuff and I hope you understand what we're, why we're looking for that. I mean, we're looking for a complete package. We didn't ask for that and it's something we need to take further and I guess we can have further conversations with you to see what that would cost and where we go from here.
Yeah, yeah, no worries on that. And you guys are working through this in real time, so no problem. Happy to let you guys kind of discuss on your own. But to your point with the kind of the base salary versus the total compensation, you're absolutely right, right? You know, that plays into your kind of your comp philosophy. So if you guys down the line, if we find out that, yeah, your benefits are really rich, you might decide that, hey, we don't have to pay as high a base salary because we have other elements of our total comp package that are making up for deficiencies in base salary. So that absolutely can point into how you craft that compensation package across the city. With that being said, increasingly, as the years go by, we find that employees pay more and more attention to that base salary rate and that becomes more important as time passes than certain benefits being offered. So that's another consideration as well. I wouldn't want to be too far below on base given what the really rich benefit package because especially a lot of those lower-level entry level positions, I mean, they're more concerned about cash in their pocket than, you know, benefits in some cases and in retirement. So a lot to consider. I agree in crafting what's right for the city.
And, you know, also, I hope you understand the spirited discussion and stuff that we had and stuff, but the eight, well, seven people around the table, that's our position. We have to be between, we have to represent the city's finances, we have to represent the employees also, and we have to make an overall fair decision. And that's why we're looking at the whole picture, not just a salary study and stuff. But I, you know, again, apologize for misunderstanding what we were initially asking for.
No problem at all. Any other questions before we continue on?
Continue, you want to wrap it up?
I think we should wrap it up.
Yeah, I think.
I think we wrapped it up.
Forty-five minutes. Ryan, I'll get in touch with you maybe next week or the week after.
Okay, yeah, sounds good.
I'll follow up with this.
Yeah, absolutely. If you guys think you'll have me back again to discuss, let me know or smaller conversations, happy to do whatever it takes to help you guys through this process.
Hey, Ryan, I appreciate you taking your evening to be with us.
Yeah, you bet, you bet. Take care, guys.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thanks, Ryan.
Okay. So do we want to have next steps for this then? Or what should, Mayor, what are you thinking for next steps that you want to?
Well, obviously, I think we touched on some, well, some talking points and I think, I think everybody is more or less arguing towards the same resolution. I mean, if it's better data, if it's more complete data that we're asking for to make a better informed decision, then I'm all for that. If you guys are all for that, feels like that's where we're going with this and maybe that was the intention initially. It just didn't, something got lost in translation or whatever it may have been. And I love the discussion. I think that's important and you're going to find that out about me is that. I think that's important for this group. I think it's important that you guys discuss topics, you advocate for what you believe in, you advocate for the people that you represent in your boards. And if we disagree at this table, that's only going to help us grow. Disagreement is not a bad thing because I think we're approaching things from different angles and don't ever feel bad about that. Don't ever feel hesitant about voicing those opinions. That's what we want. So that, that's gonna get us to a more complete decision, not just a rubber stamp. We wanna get to a complete decision that's gonna benefit everybody.
Ryan, you understand, I mean, you know, the salary is one thing, but when you add the total cost, um, what percentage that is? I mean, it's astounding now with work comp, with everything that goes.
Sure.
I mean, it's-
What, what do we pay roughly for this study?
Sixteen.
Sixteen thousand.
Okay. Sounds better than-
Well, what they, what they also talked about was job descriptions and, and also reviewed to make sure everybody was supposed to be either salaried or hourly, and that was a twenty-five thousand dollar option. Uh, so we just took the, the sixteen thousand dollar part, and then that's, again, we have money in there though. If you want to expand it, we can have them look a little further into-
And again, I think we just need to define what it is that we're hoping to get, because we can get some of that without paying more money, I think, but-
Well, but if you're gonna include the number, let's say you're gonna include what we pay for health insurance, and what we pay for vacation time, then you're gonna need somebody to do the data. I don't have the-
Yeah, quantifying that data would be a pretty tall task, I think. Now, I don't think we, like, I, I realize we, we agree that this is incomplete, but I don't think that it's irrelevant. I think Ryan did touch on something at the end that I thought was important. You know, when we're attracting an employee, we're attracting somebody that initial focus and a main focus is gonna be on that, that salary. And that will be important, and to make sure that that is matching up with our local norms, I think, is important. So I wouldn't necessarily throw this data out. I think we should still consider it. I think everybody should review it. And then I do think maybe if, if you decide to move forward with a, a more complete survey of total benefits, total compensation package, then I'm all for that. If we feel like we're gonna use it to arrive at a, well, we just wanna be, we wanna make sure we're in line.
Right.
And, and I will think quantifying that data will help, but that's up for you to decide as well. Because we, I mean, obviously, we don't know what that would cost initially, I guess, to add that data to this report.
Yeah, no, we'll find out.
And we can find out, and we can determine at that point if we feel like it's a good use of expense. And, and I think that's a fair discussion to have. But I would encourage you all, and I'm, maybe you've thumbed through it already, but to maybe consider the data just to make sure we're in line with-
Well, it looks like we're paying, it looks like we're paying a little bit less on base salary. I mean, if you look overall, it looks like on, on average, we're paying a little bit less. My question, we're not rehiring everybody in the city. We're not rehiring all twenty-one people with new people.
Mm-hmm.
So my question is, how much do we really need to pay for a study for total compensation, um, results? Yeah, because we're probably just looking at one position or two positions over the next year or two. I mean, I don't know what kind of turnover we have directly.
I agree with Joe. I think you hit it on the head.
And so then you go, okay, so there's one position we're hiring for, X position, and then we can probably do some surveying internally to get that total compensation package right. Because this is a good start, right? I mean, this is great.
Sure.
And then if, maybe we have staff or whoever do some research on that one position, to, so that we feel comfortable that we're offering-
Sure.
I mean, I, I don't know, I don't know. I don't wanna spend-
Joe, that, that's the exact value of what you have in your hand.
Yeah.
And, and that's why that's important to you. I didn't know we were gonna adjust salaries tonight. If that was the goal, we're not there. I agree with that one hundred percent. But what this does, we were a ship at sea with no idea where we were. Now you know where you're at. And so in a smaller working group with department heads who have buy-ins of what you're trying to do, and you're getting feedback from department heads who are telling you, "Hey, I'm in danger of losing employees." Or maybe they might come to you and say, "Hey, payroll's eating up my budget. I could buy more widgets with whatever if I didn't pay so much pay." You can tweak those things right here around this table. You don't need to go do a change order with C-Biz, C-Biz and, and spend more money. You don't need to do that. Gary, you're right, a hundred percent of what you're saying. I'm just saying, it's premature. That's not what we're trying to do right now, I don't think.
My wife does HR too, and so she, she's not a big fan of compensation studies, because she's, she's under the impression that they're out of date as soon as you get them, right? And I know there's some projections in here so that you can kind of start looking ahead. But, um, I, I think, I think this is a good tool, but I don't think it's gonna give us exactly what we want. And how much do we really need to study all employees at, at the city now? That's my question is, are we having fear that we're losing staff because of?
I mean, I think-
I know. I know the police department's always been kind of tough, but the other staff positions-
Other, other staff, but we've also eliminated most of our staff by, by outsourcing the street department. So, uh, you know, I think that, that as a city, and this is just my opinion, and if it's wrong, then, then that's fine. But our job is, is completely based on our employees. If we don't have any employees, we don't provide any services, and it's our job to, to provide services. So if we're not willing to take care of our employees and keep them, and, and benefit the ones that have stayed, then, then we need to be willing to lose them. And I, I'm not, but that's just my opinion.
And on the other end, on the other side of that same point-
Can you take that one step further then? So what are you thinking that we need to do?
I think we need, we, we need the information. I, I don't disagree with Alderman Smith. Um, you know, my, my, my experience has told me that cities offering a hundred percent insurance for employees only is not out of the norm. It's, it's actually the norm. Uh, anything less than that in, in a municipal setting is out of the norm. Uh, but, so, so I, I am fine with, with getting that information and solidifying that, so it's not just me telling you that.
Right.
Um, and I think that that should be considered. But if, if we are truly comparing apples to apples, and every city is paying employee benefits, and we are underpaying some of our employees, we need to bring them up to, to within the range. And again, probably unpopular decision, but I don't see anything wrong with being the best at something, or being better than average at something as it relates to, to keeping our employees and, and retaining our employees. You know, like, if we can be at baseline or better, I don't see, and I, I understand that there are a lot of other projects that require money. And I'm not, I'm not throwing that out, and I'm not, I'm not minimizing that. However, if all of our employees collectively decided to leave, we'd have nothing to offer to our citizens.
But are we in fear of that? Are we in fear of losing all of our employees?
If we treat them like crap, we will.
Have we been treating them like crap?
I, I think there have been examples.
Like what?
Consistently, members of the board have, have criticized long-term employees for being overpaid when, in my opinion, the money that you're paying them, you are saving in not having an underpaid employee spending twice the time to look up the information that the seasoned employee already knows and has. And I don't think that that does anything for morale for that employee that, that has tenure. I think that that employee that has tenure has lived through the crappy salaries and has lived through the, the, being the new person in the city, and, and they should, I'm not saying be rewarded more than somebody else, but we should appreciate their time, and we should compensate them for their experience.
Okay. Ryan, you made a, or, Brian, I'm sorry, you made a comment a while ago that most people have a tendency to just look at the salary. Now, there's two wide ranges there. If you talk about a young person, no dependents coming in, they're just looking at the base salary, that's it. But if you're looking at, at a person with a family, you know, I guarantee you, they're looking at the whole package. And that's why, you know, if you're gonna look at a wide range of employees, age-wise, dependent-wise and stuff, you have to look at the whole package. Uh, and we as, uh, warrants, I guess, of the city, we have to look at those costs.
Sure.
I wasn't minimizing that, and that, that wasn't, that wasn't the point of, of my comment too. I, I feel like, my, my point in the comment was just kind of what Ryan said, is that there, there are a lot of people that do focus on that number, and that, that is a sole focus. And it, and if that number is too low, no amount of benefits that you give them is going to make up for that in their mind.
Well, it kind of gets back to our earlier discussion about lowering the percentage for late water bills. If we're not paying our employees enough to pay their water bills, you know, then, then we're, we're the cause of that problem.
Sure. But, but I agree. I mean, obviously, different phases of your life are going to necessitate different priorities, right? And that, that's part of this, it's part of growth in general. And I still think the bottom line matters. I still think that number matters. That's why I just urged us just to, to take a look at the data, just to make sure we're in line. And I, and I think it's important just to know. If, if nothing else, it'll make us feel better about where we're at currently. And maybe in some cases, we will feel better about that. In other places, we may feel like we're underpaying or overpaying, or whatever it may be. Um, if we do wanna, I do think we should button this up though, and decide if it is something that we want to push Happy to discuss further with Ryan. And I, I know we don't necessarily have to, there's not a voting measure here, but-
I think we need to give him direction on what we're asking him to do.
Well, I think the next question would be, if, if we do feel like, maybe we can just ask Ryan to see how much it would cost to, to add that additional step of, that additional amount of data to this to give us a more complete number, and, and a complete-
Because, I mean, the core amount of his work is done. I don't think it would be much for them to come back with just a few things plugged in.
Right.
That, that would be, my hope is that, I don't know what their pricing is like, if it's like an holla cart thing, if you just wanna check that box and move it into the cart. But if, if it's, if it's something where, like you said, we've done a lot of the initial legwork on this, how much would it cost to take that one next step, if you guys would like to do that? I mean, Happy could get us the data, and we could come back and talk about it. And if we feel like it's a worthwhile expense, then we can take that step at that time.
And I, I think if, if we're looking at, you know, the, the areas that I'm hearing are education, benefits package, which would include how much we pay for, the, the city pays for insurance, how much vacation time they get, how much, uh, you know, workers comp and things like that. I mean, I guess, you know, we've gotten ourselves into that position by incidents that we've had in the past, you know? So that's not necessarily going to be something that we compare with other cities, because it's, it's specific to other cities. Even though that's an expense we pay, and that's, that's, maybe goes towards the benefits package, that's not something that is gonna be apples to apples with another city. So would I be remiss in saying, if we looked at insurance benefits, vacation benefits, and holidays, how many holidays they offer?
Yeah, leave time.
You really can't throw work comp into there, because that's mandated by law.
Right.
You know, that you have to do that, so work comp's not a, even though it's a huge expense.
And there's a liability expense for, for like, law enforcement liability, so, yeah. But again, that's not, that's not-
That's not, that's not a comment.
Right.
I'd, I'd like to add though, that tonight, are we, are we a solution looking for a problem? Because we're missing one critical piece. If we consider that this whole thing, the focus is retention, the focus is to be, maybe to be that employer of choice locally?
Well, not just retention, but if you offer, I'm saying you could even offer more, I'm not just-
I, I don't disagree with you.
But for me, I'm not saying cut, cut, cut. For me, I'm saying, if we offer a salary, maybe we jack it up, because we're getting people with master's degrees or bachelor's degrees, accounting degrees.
Gary, we, we agree, because that's a future conversation.
And bring in people into our community, because the richer we, the richer we bring in, the better off we're all gonna be.
Right. The, the point that I, I will finish making is that I don't view, it may, it might be different, and we, we referenced ordinance tonight, but I don't view myself as an operator. There are operators of the city. I view myself as oversight. And so when it comes to this issue, I think we're still, we're still kind of blind on this issue, because we've not even roped in department heads. So that smaller working group with department heads who give us the danger, how do you mitigate that danger? These people are in the forces, boots on the ground, that are telling us, "Hey, I've got X employees that might leave" to a neighboring county, a neighboring whatever, if we don't make some adjustments. It seems like we've, we're, we're trying to solve a problem tonight that's not defined as a problem right now. We, we need to have department heads speak. Not, not now.
That's an added ingredient and stuff, but-
Well, it's, it's one ingredient.
You know, Alderman touched on something a while ago, you know, we reached out, you know, through our healthcare committee, we reached out to Sonus, which is, that's what they do, advise insurance companies on benefits, you know? Uh, yeah, we realized we were in the top echelon when it come to dependent coverage and stuff. None of the six that he surveyed, and he was supposed to be re-getting us that again, updated now and stuff, but we haven't got it yet. But we were the premier. We were the best, because nobody around us offered-
That was when we were offering full family?
Yes.
But has that been reiterated now, that the, that the-
No, he, he was saying the same thing.
No, we asked for it again at the last, from that meeting with him and stuff to get updated.
The information I got from that meeting was that they were saying that it's kind of shifted, and now it is the norm to, in, in order to, to retain employees and, and attract employees, is to offer that family benefit.
Yeah, I-
I don't remember us saying, "Please get us an update," but it was still, we were offering more for family dependents and spouses than, than the city.
Yeah, no, I asked him for an update, so, I guess things have changed.
Yeah.
So we can all agree, maybe the next step is to have Happy ask what it would cost to get that additional set of data added to this report, and then we can make a decision from there, talk about it further. And if we feel like it's a good use of money, then, then we can take that next step.
And I, I would agree with, um, Alman Rainey, that it'd be nice to have department head input as far as their feelings on retention, uh, you know, is, is this really, is this critical that we address this? I, I'd love to have department head input as far as their, uh, take on salary and benefit packages and, and our current retention.
That kind of echoes what we did with the healthcare committee, because before, it was just done by this board. We brought in so many employees from each department and stuff to have their, you know, what's important to them, and just all of the information, and, uh, it's, it's been good.
Do we do retention surveys or satisfaction surveys with our employees? Have, that might be something we wanna think about as well, so we get a baseline of satisfaction. In addition, with respect to the health commission, um, committee rather, I think it would be, once we get this data back, I think it'd be a good idea to have a, um, a job description and requirements committee as well, just on targeted areas. Uh, just so that we can review those and make sure that everything's looking good. Because I'm not saying, again, I'm gonna say this clearly, I'm not saying I wanna cut salaries or take things away. What I'm saying is, if we're, if we're gonna have requirements that attract even more brilliant people, if that's possible, than the ones we have, and they come to the community and they're just spectacular, then that benefits us. And what we need to make sure that we are offering or asking for the same thing that other cities are. We can't just fudge it and say, you know, "Okay, I know you and everything else, I'm bringing you in."
Happy, you heard.
So I, I move for the, I, I would like to have a committee, I'd like to be one of the liaisons as Alderman on it. And I'd also like to have the ordinance where, uh, we don't, we don't help, help guide you with your decisions with respect to-
It's interference, is what, uh-
So I, I need that ordinance, Pam.
Yeah, either one fifteen or two twenty.
One fifteen to two twenty. Something to revisit.
Uh, I, I, I would disagree just a little bit in that-
How'd I know it was kind of?
Respectfully. You know, every time someone says respectfully, I always thought of it as something-
No, that's, that's what they say, "With all due respect." I, I, I think that we muddy the water a little bit if we get a bunch of board feedback on job descriptions. There, there are, the municipality offers sample job descriptions and, and-
Okay, then would it be fair then for us to ask Happy to give us job descriptions from other areas that are comparable to the ones we have?
Yeah.
With respect to education requirements?
And I think, like, similar to we, what we do with the, the city manual, like, present it to us and we approve it. I don't wanna get into the nuts and bolts.
From the same target audience that he surveyed?
Right.
From the same target audience?
Well, I just mean, I just, yeah, I just mean, if, if he wants to, to present those, if we feel like we need to approve them.
What I'm saying is, I'd like to see job descriptions from other areas that he surveyed and their requirements. Because you, that's how you feel, that's how it's equal.
Happy, I mean, through other associations, I mean, you've done this job in other places and stuff. Is there other associations that we have available information that we can go to for some of this, all of these things and stuff? Whether it's benefit packages, I mean, or is that all hush hush, or is it available to?
You can put it on a list, serve and ask for respondents and see what you get back, which it's random, and you're not surveying like-type areas, and you don't then narrow it down to just St. Genevieve or Perryville or Perry County and St. Francis County, so you get a wider input.
But what if this information falls under, um, what am I looking for here? Just slipped off my mind, but, you know, there's certain things we can ask and certain things we can't ask by law of other municipalities and stuff. I mean, what, um, is that in-
Job descriptions are, are something you can get from anybody, but you can't ask for specifics of employees, obviously.
Like specific employee records or anything?
Right.
Job descriptions?
Right, yeah, that's, I'm sorry, I just-
And if, but, you know, we can't ask anything on the medical. We can ask what you offer in the way of insurance, but we don't, we don't ask anything in particular on an individual. I just don't know how much data and information you'll, you'll want, because, again, we went through the job descriptions and looked at what we thought the education requirements need to be, the certifications needed to be, and that's where we have them set right now, and, and that's what's been included. Uh, now, if you're talking about paying more, that does come into the salary study, if you're gonna pay more for education, because when you look at mid-range or higher, and now you have a range at which you can put that person in, instead of just guessing.
But that's something we can handle on an individual basis of a new hire or?
I mean, there isn't like, there isn't like the job description for city administrator, a job description for city clerk, I mean, you get varieties of them from people, and then you compare and see what applies to your jurisdiction or doesn't.
We have one on you.
And again, the qualifications versus the duties are two different things. I mean, a qualification for our city range employees are, have a pulse, be this age and be willing to work, you know, and again, I don't mean to.
Wow.
I don't mean to insult anybody, but, you know, for, when we had street department employees, if we had summer help and they were eighteen and would show up to work and could pass a drug test, then they're qualified to work as an employee during the summer. So, you know, I think that if we are going to require degrees for, for every position below, you know, police captain or whatever it is, and whatever you're.
And again, I'm not focusing on police.
No, I know, but we have, we have police and we have city hall employees. That's what we're down to, right? So, you know, we have the city administrator, we can look at his job description, we have the police chiefs, we can look at his job description.
We now have the assistant city administrator. We also have, we have a treasurer and accountant.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I could target those if that's what you want me to do.
Targets are hard words.
You're a police officer, I thought I'd use that. And by the way, just for point of clarification, with respect to ordinance one one five two two oh, it says shall not directly interfere with the conduct of any department. I don't think doing a committee and advising is interfering. So we'd have to have that cleared up, the verbiage.
Let our attorney figure that out.
Yeah, I think we will. All right, well, that's all I have. Are you done?
Yes, sir.
Spirited discussion.
Okay. All right. So you're going to research that with Ryan?
Yeah.
And then report back and we'll go from there.
Okay.
Okay. All right. We're going to move on to.
And also, I'll ask you, we're going to get some input from department heads.
This is in regards to employee retention?
Yeah.
And potentially what they're seeing when they're attempting to hire new employees?
In addition to the department heads, Joe, wouldn't it be, I think it'd be a good to have a survey, data, quantifiable. I mean, if there's people out there who are miserable, we should be addressing that.
And we don't know.
And we don't know that without the data. You can't do anything without data. So I propose we.
I disagree.
Do a couple of things.
That's just me, because there's so much in that everybody talks about data and.
So you don't think that doing an employee survey is value added?
I think we can do that, but.
I'm asking if you think it's value added.
Is it value added?
In this discussion, because we're talking about department heads who don't maybe know how every employee feels.
Well, Gary, if you ask Happy a question, I'd like to hear his full answer, though. I don't think that's fair.
Thank you, Mr. Rainey.
I thought you appreciated.
I appreciate that.
You probably already asked that in your employee meetings, don't you?
Why?
Their input.
Their input, yeah.
But sometimes if it's.
But I mean, we're not, we're not narrowing into it every time, saying, what do you like it, what do you hear from your employees, or what are they, are they leaving us because, or are they looking at leaving us for what reasons, or is there something that we need to do? But that's, I guess you could call that anecdotal rather than data, because it's not on a survey sheet.
Yeah, I think if we set out a anonymous, an anonymous survey.
Like they did at school.
Then we have to be willing to at least consider what that survey is saying, you know, I mean, if, if, and I don't want to even throw out hypotheticals because I don't want to put any ideas in anybody's head, but I think we need to be at least open minded enough, if those surveys come back, what we would view as negatively, at least give them consideration.
Agreed.
And I think that's the whole point of doing this, right? I mean, if we got some negative feedback.
Well, I think some of the idea of doing this was to see if we were overpaying.
Oh, okay, let's get it. Interesting. Pardon?
Just in case. Just in case.
Mine too.
All right. I'm going to move us along to agenda item number two, because we do have a lot to cover still. And agenda item number two is cybersecurity.
So we have been working with forward slash on coming up with better cybersecurity for our systems. You all received a package separate of what the media received, so you have more details, more information. But you know what we're looking at adding. This is something that we've included in our ARPA grant and included in as part of the funding. We are just now getting into the cybersecurity insurance part of it, and those questionnaires are very detailed and very, very much asking for the things that we are looking at right here. So what we're looking at with the ARPA money is to implement, but you will have yearly fees that you have to pay. But I think we're at a point that we're going to have to begin to implement these items or we're going to be falling behind. And we're going to end up paying for it in our insurance. So the question is, if you're on board, we'll bring back a contract at the next meeting with these, with these items included to begin implementing, and that'll probably be a three-month process.
Yes.
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 Okay.
Make it up.
All right. Move on to agenda item number three, which is bi-weekly paychecks.
So I'm not as hot on this as I was probably a couple of weeks ago, but there is the, more communities pay, and I don't have a survey number for that, it's anecdotal, talking to people, but most places, most businesses seem to pay every other Friday or something, not twice a month. I'm used to being paid every other Friday. So you get 26 checks in a year instead of 24, your pay is lower per paycheck, but it is more regular, so it's the every other, other week kind of thing. So we come up against something, and for some reason, it's like, well, we don't, I wonder if we should do like bi-weekly? But we haven't sent out a survey yet for employees, so that would be something I'd want to pursue, but, you know, does the board even care if we look at changing that? It is a little more work on staff because you have two more paychecks every year to put out, but we've got staff to handle that. And it depends on if the employees don't mind the every other, every other week, and then the extra paycheck. I always liked the extra paycheck, it was like a bonus.
Does the board need to approve that?
Well, I just, yes, it's in our personnel manual.
I do like your idea of a survey, asking them to. Because I heard somewhere that data runs everything, data drives everything. And as a caring benevolent alderman, I think whatever the employees want in this room, they should get.
I second that.
Somebody said a ton of extra work, or I mean, it's all electronic deposit and?
It's all electronic, it's just compiling it, so you have two more paychecks that you have to do, and you're doing it every other week and not twice a month.
So does that take approval by department heads, or does it?
No, it's in our personnel policy, so we have to then change that personnel policy to say every other week paychecks. It's what the employee then expects, and when we hand them the policy when they are new hires.
So do we have many hourly employees, or are they all salaried?
No, we got a lot, yeah. All police officers are.
City hall staff.
All hour, all hour, all night.
Yeah. Your department heads are all salaried. But still, I mean, it's still every other week and.
Would you then come back to the board and express the desires of those, that employee base and let us make decisions?
If the employees turn it down, I won't even bring it back to you, because that's kind of what we did on the other, other survey that we asked them about, casual clothes and.
We've had a lot of surveys recently, haven't we?
Yes, we have, and the insurance.
We have a lot of that.
I don't think Gary heard that.
What was that? What was that?
He heard it.
Even if the data doesn't say they want it, I'd still love to see the data of the survey.
So.
I don't.
I do. Remember, these are easy surveys, these have an easy question, yes, no.
Yes, no.
Thank you.
Boom, all anonymous, all anonymous.
Just to button this one up, at this point, next step, we're going to survey employees and then go with, I guess, majority on that?
I think that's great.
We'll call it that?
Yep.
Okay. Are you good with that?
We'll get you the data, Gary.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. Hey, Chief, you okay with that?
Hi.
All right.
Ex-chief.
Oh, Alderman Bennett, you okay with that? Sorry, Chief, I apologize, sir.
All right, we will move on to business item, excuse me, work session item number four, which is addressing the door between city hall and the police department.
Mr. Brownie's request.
Okay.
Mom, Rowley, 498 Merchant Street. My concern with that door is, if anybody doesn't know about the sign that was taken from a yard, the Trump pin sign, and then put back in my yard, altering it to be an obscene sign, it was in the police department, they had it for evidence. It was brought to my attention that allegedly two people came from city hall side, walked through the door that has the combination lock, whatever you want to call it, and removed the sign. So I went on and I talked to the chief about it, and he goes, ah, he goes, no, he goes, that's here in the police department. Well, a couple minutes later, he called over lieutenant, and I say, I want to see my sign. And he goes, what sign? I said, the eye pump, you know, what sign? And he goes, oh, you know, that thing disappeared. Somebody went in allegedly and stole it. The state police now has opened an investigation with two of the suspects, and the suspects allegedly went in from this side, and they questioned David Bova and they questioned Sue Johnson. Now, my concern is, if somebody came in from that side, city hall side, went into the police department, which is supposed to be secured, they could have went in there with a gun and started shooting. It could have been something really serious. I don't think a cost, whatever it's going to cost to remove that door, wall it off, put in another door so city hall people can have access to the basement, a cost of that shouldn't be a question. What's the cost of the police department and our police officers? I think that's, that's the question. If somebody has, you know, the gall to go in and take a sign, if somebody had a real bad day, what keeps them from going in there and start shooting people? I'm requesting that door be removed immediately. I'm not only a victim of the sign, now I'm a victim because somebody went in there and removed it. So I am demanding that door be removed. There's no reason why anybody, you guys in the city hall are not police officers, you have no business, nobody in this board has any business walking from city hall side and just buzzing themselves in. No, that's stop, that's going to stop.
Mr. Brownie, I do have supervision over the police department, so that it's my responsibility to see what is going on.
Then, then, you know what? Then you didn't watch it too good.
I don't know what allegation you're talking about, and I have no proof of that, of what you've been talking about.
Well, you can.
So I disagree with your basis.
You can call Mike from the state drug task force, he'll, he'll let the clue in. That door has to be removed.
No.
Oh, yes, it will be.
No, I'm sorry, sir.
Then I'm going to file a lawsuit against the city naming you then, because this is crazy, this door, that door has to be gone.
No, Mr. Brownie.
Oh, yes, yes, sir.
There is an access between the city hall and police department.
What's the difference with this door, and I'm not sure which door you're talking about?
The doors from city hall, they can walk through their office and push a code in and walk into the police department.
But there's a code, right?
Yes, it's a code.
But what's the difference of this door, then, two of them coming through here and going in there?
Well, that's not going into the police department.
Well, but it can.
Through that other door that he's talking about.
Through that door I'm talking about.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry. I didn't know which door.
There's a storage room that has access between.
They can put in a different door so you can get that storage room. They don't need to be going through that door no more, that, that, no more.
So, Mr. Brownie, if I have an issue up front with somebody at the front counter and I call for the police department, they're going to have to go all the way around the building.
Yeah, that's right, go all, if I have a problem with somebody, I call 911, they come from wherever they're at. You're no different than I am.
I think we are. I think we have that protection and we have that responsibility for our employees.
Happy, aren't you Jason's boss?
I am.
Yeah, so that, I mean, there's direct access to.
Well, yes, they can go walk, walk in there and do whatever they want. If there's evidence there, it's like, oh, that's my cousin.
No, if there's evidence, if there's evidence, it is locked in a locked room that only two people have a key to. So if there was evidence, it would not have been left in the open.
You're not a cop, you don't know what's going on over there.
I have worked with four different police.
I don't care, you're not a cop.
We don't need to, we don't need to do that, so.
Hey, hey, hey.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. So this, this incident happened before our remodel. There are additional security protocols that are in place, allegedly happened before our remodel. So there are additional security measures that are in place that weren't here then. The, and I don't want to get into that on an open record, but I understand and respect his request. I think that the conditions that were here prior to that remodel are not here now. The door is still here, the number of people that have access to that code is substantially less, and my understanding just includes Happy. There is still some property in the, in the police department side that he has to access. And again, I don't want to get into the specifics of the architecture, but the, the conditions that were present when this was alleged to have happened are not the same as they are today.
I understand.
And there are additional security.
I understand that.
I think that that's probably sufficient for, for the purposes that we have as far as maintaining integrity, and the door is not open, and, and, I mean, if Happy has a bad day and comes back with a gun, then that's the person that we have to deal with, or they have to deal with. But he's the only, he's the only person now that has access to that.
Well, he's not a sworn law officer, he, nobody, in my opinion, should be coming through that door other than a police officer. And I'm asking you guys, please do something about that door. Nobody should have access no more from this side to that side. There can be another door put in, you guys can go the other way. If you need help, they can walk around, you know, they're going to come in from a different street anyways, they're on patrol, they're not sitting here waiting for Happy to call.
Chief, may I ask a quick question? Maybe it's not in the same vein as this. The only person to have access to your, your door, sir, would be the city administrator and your police officers?
Correct.
Okay. Is your, is the security code changed on a regular basis?
As far as I know, it has not been changed since we.
So, but it's just you and the police officers, is that correct, sir?
Actually, it's me, the city clerk.
Oh.
And police officers.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Thanks, thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
This topic respectfully seems to touch also the building committee that is working with the remodel, city hall side now, right? Can I recommend we defer to the building committee, talk about this, seek out any, any written guidance that dictates how we configure these doors, access egress points or whatever, and then obviously get back with Mr. Brownie and explain?
Thank you, sir, I appreciate this.
I mean, you're bringing up a valid concern, you deserve an answer, but we deserve to do our work. Somewhere in the middle, there's an answer. I mean, I don't, I don't think we get there tonight.
I know, I just wanted to break everybody's tension, it has to be addressed.
Yeah, no, I think, I don't see any reason why we can't talk that through.
Good job, Almond Rainey, I agree.
Why do we have the clerk have access back there too?
Well, because of payroll, payroll questions, payroll issues.
Well, that's just a phone, that's just a phone call or an email.
She's also HR and has to get answers, and there's a reason.
Well, if you, I'd question, maybe just besides you having, I mean, I don't, I'll put an extra burden on.
Is this worthy of a closed session, to discuss some of the ins and outs?
If we're going to talk about security, yes.
Then I would make a motion that we take a listen and finish it in closed session.
I would like to address certain aspects of this issue as well.
Okay.
Publicly.
Sure.
Mr. Brownie is through.
We are going to address this issue. We're going to bring it to the commission and we will get back to what we're going to do, sir.
I appreciate it. I appreciate Alderman.
Per Alderman Rainey's suggestion, which was.
Thanks, Mr. Brownie.
All right.
Mr. Kinsky?
I speak on this issue.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
My name is Carl Kinsky. I live at 64 North Second Street here in St. Genevieve. And I share Mr. Brownie's concerns about protecting evidence and the integrity of evidence. Because if we don't protect that integrity, if we don't protect that chain of custody, then somebody can come up here and make vague bogus accusations, settling, making innuendos, accusing people by hint and by misdirection. And that is a terrible thing, because evidence integrity is vitally important to law enforcement and vitally important to the citizens so that they can trust that evidence is accurately maintained. So I agree with Mr. Brownie. By all means, and ask your police chief what is needed to maintain the integrity of evidence so that we do not see the citizens of this city accused by innuendo and hint and not given an opportunity to address specific accusations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kinsky.
Made a motion in a second for a closed session at some point. I don't know.
I don't, I don't think we can do that on this topic at this moment, but.
No, no, that's what you said, a future.
I think Dave would like to speak on it, too.
I would, and I, you know, probably because a little bit of my integrity has been brought into question here tonight, that none of those incidents happened and I'm unaware of any Missouri State Highway Patrol investigation. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Alleged, alleged, yeah.
So Alderman Rainey brought up potentially leaving this item to be discussed further with the city hall building committee.
Yeah.
And maybe a discussion at that time and maybe it's, it's worthy of, chief, maybe you offering up some suggestions on that as well.
So we're going to have to appoint somebody else to that committee.
Yeah, I'd like to not be the Lone Ranger in that committee at this point. I want to have somebody else.
Well, I mean, Alderman Bennett would have a unique perspective on this.
Alderman Iguodala. So it was you and Alderman Iguodala.
My pleasure.
That's right, that's right.
Yeah. And then, and then Alderman Bennett can do it as well.
Okay. So that committee is, is already in place, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So are we just adding Alderman Bennett to that discussion then or that committee?
I think that would be a good one.
Okay.
We always hurt the ones who are.
All right. We will move on to work session, agenda item number five, which is in regards to the next steps with the progress Parkway property.
So we have the option going into a closed session, yeah, in case you wanted to get into any minor details. You don't have to. It's only left up as an option on the property. As you remember from our last meeting, we did not get any bids. So at this point, we are kind of awaiting to see what to do next. That's what we said next step.
I make a motion to go into closed session to discuss the property on progress Parkway.
I will second that motion.
Of a first and a second. We will roll call that.
Alderman Klepharn.
Yes.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Bennett.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Steiger.
Yes.
Motion carries eight fourteen.